All right, I call to order the May 14th, 2009, meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee. Will the minutesaker please call roll?
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Caddella?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Lewatton?
Here.
Coram being present, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 23rd, 2009 PZB meeting?
A move.
Your second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. The next item to discuss here this evening are proposed revisions to the sign ordinance. I want to take them out of order, I want to invert them. The second recommendation I want to discuss first, which would be the staff's recommendation to consider at least a 12-month extension on the grandfather clause for all currently non-conforming signs. John, would you please expound on that request?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the time the original sign ordinance was adopted, there was an amortization schedule included with that, which is very typical when you adopt that type of an ordinance. And the way the amortization schedule was laid out was that if someone had a freestanding sign that was older than five years, previous to the date of the adoption of the sign ordinance, then they would have three years to replace it with a conforming sign. If the sign they had in place was less than five years old at the date of adoption of the sign ordinance, then they would have five years to bring that sign into compliance. Again, it's no secret to everybody what's happened to the economy the last couple of years, and I've had several conversations over the past year with a lot of business owners, some members of the chamber, some not members of the chamber, and they've all expressed the fact that they just simply don't have the money right now to convert their signs. As I put in the memo, sometimes even a conversion from a freestanding sign, cutting the pole off, lowering that sign, using the same box can cost a couple thousand dollars. If you talk about replacing an entire sign with a new monument-style sign, you could be spending 10, you could be spending 15. I talked to Ron Maher, he said that a new sign could cost him as much as $25,000 to convert. So again, it just seems reasonable at this point in time. I wanted to bring to the council for you to consider extending that amortization period to help our businesses as best we can in this economy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Forrest. Alderman Coles?
All right. I read the, in 2006, when the sign ordinance came up and it was passed, I said that we should hold off on it. I voted against it. The reason I voted against it was because we were still undetermined what was going to happen to Irving Park. So I decided, my own personal opinion was that we held off on the sign ordinance until we found out what was going on in Irving Park. So I said no. Now I will change my vote to yes, because Irving Park is going to stay the same. So as far as I'm concerned, whatever has to be done to help the people that are in business, I would consider either two years, three years, or four years, until the economy changes around. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Alderman Coles. Alderman Eugene Wesley's next.
John, how many signs do we have out there that are non-compliant in this area now?
I don't have an actual number.
I know some of them did change them already.
Right. About, I would say between 10 and 15 percent of the businesses have changed existing signs to conforming signs, and there are a couple of new businesses that have, their initial signs are conforming signs. They're monument-style signs.
What they did, right.
And, you know, just personal opinion, when you drive down Irving Park, the signs that have been converted, or the new signs that are the monument-style, I think, you know, go well towards accomplishing the goal.
I know 711 changed theirs.
Correct.
I believe Forrest Engraving changed theirs.
Correct.
I believe Marathon Station and Ashen. Marathon changed theirs as they went along.
Right, the Marathon at Irving and Addison Road, they also changed.
Okay. Yeah.
Alderman Police?
John, we were talking just before the meeting. So my understanding was any older sign over five years old was three years, and any newer sign was five years?
Correct.
I mean, that seemed to work pretty good for everybody, and instead of this one-year deal here, I think three years would be more than sufficient. I, can I make a motion here?
Sure.
I'd like to make the motion to, now this is for the section that was non-compliant, was exempt before, right? Is that what we're talking about, just the exempt section?
No, I believe we're talking, again, Chairman is taking these, he's flip-flopping the order of these two items that I brought up for your review. Number one is, addresses the businesses that are exempt per the current sign ordinance, and the second issue is overall extending the time for compliance. We're talking about the extension time for the compliance to the businesses that now are subject to having to convert.
That were in the exempted area.
That were not in the exempted area.
To clarify, we're discussing those businesses who the clock has been ticking for the last three years, and the bell is ringing now.
So they're going to get another three years? Is that what you're voting on here?
Well, again, my recommendation is for the council to consider a minimum of a one-year extension for those businesses. If you want to give it more, that's certainly your discretion. If you want to give it a year with, you know, the condition that you maybe go back in a year and see how the economy is, see if the businesses are in a little better condition, and, you know, that's, again, that's up to you.
Uh-huh. Go ahead.
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, call a second, and then call the question. I make a motion to, I'll make a motion to grant a two-year extension to all these businesses that, like I say, that the clock has currently been ticking on. That is, all the businesses that were considered non-exempt previously, and that at some point or another, according to our current code, have to comply. So I'm looking for a two-year extension. Is there a second?
I second, I'll agree.
And the question? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I believe there's a citizen of a business that will be affected mildly, or are we, it's up to you.
Yes, absolutely, sir. Please take the podium.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Dave Kramer, I own the Davis Barbecue, and people have asked me to come here and give my opinion, and so I'm here to do just that. And simply enough, if John Forrest, or you are right, and the economy is going to be good enough to me, for me to change my sign affordably in a year, I'm happy to do it. I agree, it looks better, I would prefer to have it that way myself. I don't know that it's any safer. I think it's, in personal opinion, it's much more difficult to see a monument sign when you're going down Irving, Irving Park Road at 35 miles an hour than it is to see a sign that's upright and visible. I'm not here to argue that point, I'm here to say that as a business owner, when I can afford to do it, I'm happy to do it, and short of that, I don't want to be pressed into doing, into spending any money that I don't have to spend because of where the economy is. I mean, I'm sure we're all, as business people, doing everything we can to hold off and save our money so we can survive as far, as long as we can if things get worse, and that's my only position. I'm, you know, I want to be supportive of the community as long as I can afford to do that, and just by saying we're going to put it off for a year doesn't make me feel good that things are going to be better in a year, but if things are better, happy to do it, and if I can afford it, I'm happy to do it, and if I can't, you'll see me hooting and hollering again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to speak for this council, or the one that's going to be sitting here in two years, but the very fact that we're discussing this rather than enforcing what was, what was put into law three years ago, I think shows that we do understand that there's an economy issue. I assume that the council in two years, if things are not better or worse, or not much better, will likely reconsider at that point as well. That was one of the reasons I pushed for two years rather than one year. Yes, sir?
Yeah, you know, I agree with all of that, and I, you know, I was asked to come here and say what I thought, and, you know, that's just exactly what I did, and as respectful as possible, that's how me, and I'm sure a lot of us feel around here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Alderman Coles?
Just one thing to say, if the economy doesn't straight, this can always be brought up again. So I mean, you, I mean, we can always add a couple more years if the economies don't straighten out, so.
Any other comments or questions by this committee? Alderman Police?
Just so I'm clear, we're talking about all this, all the signs that we're out of the exempt area right now, right? That's what the motion for, so then there's going to be a separate.
That is the intent of my motion, right? Then we'll discuss the next one.
Okay.
So I'm two-year extension on all currently non-exempt, two-year extension on all currently non-exempt signage. Alderman Wesley, and then we'll call the vote.
What area is, that we're talking about now, the jewel, the target exempted?
I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Forrest.
All right, I do have a couple of overheads that I did want to show you when we discuss the second point, but what we're talking about right now are the existing businesses that were considered at the time to be outside of the Wooddale Road and Irving Park Intersection Study area, which runs roughly from Maple to Salt Creek, Division to Stoneham. So anything outside of that footprint are, is what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Does staff have anything they want to add or show before this vote?
I just want to be sure, we're giving a two-year extension across the board to the signs that are presently impacted by this.
That's my intention.
Okay.
All right, let's, please call the roll.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
Motion passes. Okay, the next item would be these other, these other businesses, these other properties in the area previously, by the previous council, considered exempt due to the questions surrounding what would happen with and in the supposed occurrence of an Irving Park bypass. With that, I'm going to give the floor back to Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the time, the council was considering the new sign ordinance in late 2005 and 2006. We were also studying the feasibility and whether or not Irving Park Road was going to be rerouted, which would have impacted quite a few businesses in the area. So what we came up with at the time was a study from one of the consultants, and when the sign ordinance was passed, businesses that were included in an area referred to as the Intersection Study area were exempt from compliance to the new sign ordinance. So you can see, the yellow area is what was designated as the Intersection Study area, runs roughly from Maple on the east to Salt Creek on the west, Division on the south, to Stoneham on the north. And I have two other overheads that give a little closer-up view of that. Let's see. Again, you've got Maple over on the east end of that. West to Salt Creek, and then up to Stoneham. This area, at the time, there was a lot of discussion about whether Irving Park was going to be routed, if so, what direction was it going to take, how was it going to impact those businesses. So the council decided, again, to exempt that area from compliance to the amortization schedule, to change any non-conforming signs to a conforming sign. We've, three years have gone by, and it appears that, at least for the near future, nothing is going to be happening with Irving Park. So again, the recommendation coming to you is the properties that were previously exempted from compliance to the sign ordinance, as far as replacing non-conforming signs with a conforming sign, again, I'm bringing forward the fact that, you know, you as the council should consider removing that exemption for those properties, give them the same amortization table as the other properties had originally, in other words, three years if your sign was over five years old, five years if it was less than five years old. So that some point in time, citywide, all of the signage on Irving Park and Wooddale Road will then be compliant to the monument-style sign.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. I see two very distinct and separate sides to this. I mean, one is that it appears that should an Irving Park bypass happen, the latest plan that the majority of this council seems to be in favor of doesn't affect any of these businesses. So that, that staff's recommendation, particularly with this three-year minimum extension, does seem feasible. At the same time, there is the possibility of the downtown redevelopment, and the fact that until final engineering is done on this bypass and final approval happens, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. So, like I say, I see two sides to this. I kind of want to open the discussion up to the rest of the council and see how others feel, and if anybody feels strongly one way or another enough to make a proposal and a motion. Alderman Shockey?
Thank you. The reason we talked about this in the first place was to make Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road look nicer. Other towns have had these monument signs, ordinances, and they work very well, and I think they look a lot better when they're all approximately the same height. Now we have two different types of people. I think the easiest thing to do would be to make them all the same. They have either two or three years to put up the new sign, or fix the sign, to a monument sign. I know the economy is bad, and I don't expect them to do it now, but I think any businessman is going to put money on the side, just like the city does, for projects. Each year, we put so much money towards the lights, for instance, this is the same type of thing, to make the city nicer-looking. So I think we should settle on a, on a time limit, and stick to that time limit, whether it's two or three years, whatever you decide, but for everybody.
So Alderman Shockey's take is that we should, we should impose a time limit, and we should get that clock starting. Anybody else? Yes, sir, please take the podium again.
Hi, I'm not really prepared to discuss this, just hearing what I heard. I would say, as a businessman, I own the entire block east of Maple, and I've made a significant investment in this community, and while I'm not opposed to a monument sign, I am more in favor of enhancing my business position, so I wouldn't be in favor of giving up any advantage that I might hold now unless there was some type of commitment from the city to be supportive of any change that might go on in the future. Which is to say, if the, if nothing changes, and you're not going to do anything with Irving Park, it makes sense to me that everybody should comply. But if something changes, and I've made this substantial investment in the block, and my opportunity or advantage is lessened, that doesn't, you know, I'm already suffering from not being able to make the normal and natural profits that would be going on if Irving Park and Wooddale was developed like other surrounding communities are. I'm already suffering from what the economy is doing because of Wall Street and the financial problems that we have. You know, I'm, I have a giant building there that I'm only using a small part for office space, and then I have a, a house there that I'm paying, you know, significant taxes on that, that's not generating or bringing any revenue to my business now. So the last thing I'm interested in doing is lessening my position down the road. So, so again, to summarize, if you're never going to do anything with Irving Park Road, makes sense to me that everybody should follow the same rules. If you're, if you're ever going to do anything different with the property that I purchased with the intent of building my business and the opportunities for the community, I wouldn't want to have any disadvantage there. Thank you.
It's my understanding that the Sweet Baby Ray property is well beyond the scope of this bypass, but what I am going to do, and I don't mean to do it, but I'm either going to put staff or Mayor Johnson on the hot seat here, just looking for information. Does anybody have a recent update on CTE and SCC and the state and status of the engineering of this bypass? When do you think we might see a fairly final draft of this road location, and have a good feel for whether or not this is, got a good possibility of a green light?
When you say bypass, can you clarify, are we talking about the bypass project that's currently in the works that is going to run west from Wooddale Road? And then?
The dogleg, as we're calling it?
Correct.
The great separation dogleg through Old Commercial Street and under the tracks?
I would have to defer to the mayor for timing on that, but my only comment on that would be, to the best of my knowledge, the installation of that bypass would not impact any of the existing businesses, either on Irving or on Wooddale Road. It may, may impact, from what I understand, it's supposed to come out somewhere between, around the bowling alley, just west of the bowling alley, so it may affect a piece of commercial property, but I don't think there's an actual business there right now. As far as any Irving Park bypass, which would be major reconstruction of Irving Park, again, I'd have to, I'm not aware of any, but many times I'm the last to know anything.
It's, it's this dogleg particularly that I'm, that I'm talking about. Mr. Mayor, can you shed any light on that?
Yes, I can, but let me paraphrase my comments, since I have an affected piece of property on your discussion, so my comments are only on the grade separation. And regarding the sign code, I, like Alderman Lewatton, would abstain, but I'm this committee, and I don't vote anyway. But with that declaration, Mr. Douthwaite, Mr. Mermis, Ross Clicker, and I met with Smith Engineering, District One, Metra, DuPage County, Mr. Kramer, you were there, weren't you not? Oh, you were not? Okay. And the plan that you have before you, which is only the western leg of the bypass that does not affect Sweet Baby Ray's property, or anything to the east of the Wooddale Road is all that we're talking about, all of those agencies have tentatively signed off on the plan. However, they are going to eliminate the traffic lights at what would be the White Cottage location and at the Holy Ghost location. Both of those would cause traps, which they feel would be unsafe, that cars would get stuck and wouldn't have clearance of the railroad crossing. So with eliminating that from the plan, they see no reason why it can't go forward and proceed, complete the Phase One study, then we would have to hire, the city council has to hire a new firm to do the engineering, the Phase Two engineering, which that could be awarded in the next 30 or 60 days. One year of engineering, simultaneous with that, you can do land acquisition, and then one year of construction. So it's ready to proceed. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. So city can proceed in the near future with bringing on a consulting engineer, and all agencies, once again, to paraphrase the paraphrase, all, all connected agencies are seemingly in favor of this. Alderman Police?
I make a motion, we remove the exemption in the sign ordinance in that Irving Park, Wooddale Road Study area, and go with the previous three years for any sign that was over five years old, and five years for any sign that was under five years old. And then this would also, there'd be no more exemptions, right? Because I think one or two signs would go up with a pole, so that won't ever happen again either, right?
Correct, yes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
And the question, Alderman Shockey?
Yeah, I'm sure I understand, though, you're saying three and five years again?
Well, that's just for the, the area that used to be exempted, because it's two years for the, the areas that were not exempt. That's what we passed, just.
If I may, as I mentioned before, I think we should level the playing field and have the same amount of time for everybody now. So if you want to make it three years, to change it for everybody three years, I think that's a fair thing to do. I'd rather not have some people with two years and some people in three years.
Well, I only said three years because that's what they gave the original owners outside of the scope of the study area, so I, to be fair to those businesses that are now, they get three years. Those other businesses that we just gave it two years to, they already had their three years, so they're really getting five. But if you want to do, you know, it's fine, I, you know, either way.
Is, is Alderman Shockey's request to bring that down to two years flat?
Or three years, flat, whatever the council decides, but to have it all the same.
Does the motioner agree with either of those?
I can go with the three years if that's council's feeling. I make it three years across the board for everybody, that's, I'll change my motion.
Does the secondor agree? I think that was Alderman Coles?
Yes, I would agree.
Anything else on the question? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
Abstain.
Four to three, that passes. The next item on?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, as a point of order.
Sorry.
Did that motion overrule the previous motion, as I understand it? And so staff clearly understands that whether you're in the excluded area or outside the excluded area, everybody gets three additional years? Is that the intent of the motion?
That motion was intended to stand alone.
That was not, see, that was not my impression. So I think you might need to clarify.
All right, well, then, no, let's, well, what's the motioner? All right, let's, let me ask the motioner to clarify then.
Well, I said three years for those that are, that were in the exempted area. Alderman Shockey requested, give everybody three years. To me, that seems unfair, as a former business owner. One guy's now getting six years, and I get three, so I was just thinking, as former business owner, well, I, I should get the same thing. Now they're getting six, I'm getting, still getting three, if you're... So my, my intention was strictly three years and five years. Alderman Shockey requested, I changed my motion per his request, no problem, but I felt that that wasn't fair to the businesses that were outside of the exempted area.
I thought, I thought the motion was only considering the area previously exempt.
He asked me to change my motion, if I would agree, I said, okay, that's fine.
Alderman Shockey, did you intend for three years across the board, or only three years on the, on the previously exempted?
Across the board.
So it was your intention that that motion would have, would have negated the previous motion, so two years wasn't, no longer appropriate?
That's what I was thinking, yes. Thank you.
It doesn't change my vote, but I don't know.
Okay, okay, what?
So, as a, as a question, to somebody who's been doing this longer than me, what just happened?
Mr. Mayor, we want to just go council, and then we'll have another roll call in council?
We will, and we can try to clarify the motion a little bit.
Well, then, why don't we just strike this motion totally, and then get another motion on the floor? Can't we do that?
The motion passed. It's a matter of interpretation, everybody can interpret the, the way they want, but next week we'll try to clarify it for staff, clearly.
Alderman Coles?
Can I say something?
Yes.
I think we should put in, we should put in, if the economy changes around, if the economy don't change around, I can't see, I mean, I'm a businessman, too, and when it comes to a sign, our equipment and stuff like that, I've held off because I can't afford it. And you have to, you have to give the businesses a chance. Businesses are holding on by teeth, and you've got to, you've got to give consideration of what's happening. There's a recession now, and things are tough. And I think, I think if you tell a guy that's got, just put up a sign that cost them, we'll say it cost them $25,000, and you tell them in three years it's going to come down, and he's going to spend another $15,000 to make another sign, and I don't think he's going to be able to afford it. So I think an ordinance should have, if the, if the economy changes around, then, then it has to be enforced.
I think we can definitely add that at the, at the council level before we move forward with that. Alderman Winger, did you have a comment?
Just that if we're going to put another three years on the areas that we said, please Just that if we're going to put another three years on the areas that we said, please do this in three years, it's saying that the ordinances are, don't really matter almost. It's just, okay, we'll just keep giving a rubber stamp of three years all the way through. It, it just doesn't sit well with me, and we're doing this because of the economy, trying to extend it in some goodwill fashion. And if we want to do that, we'll do it one year, two the most, but to say three years, and then we just keep rubber stamping it, it sends a message, too, to the people that did comply, that did save their money aside, and say, you know what, I am going to fix, and I'm going to make this look better, because I do believe in the community. So we need to reel this in, and really think about what we've asked people to do over the past three years, and put this back into perspective. Thank you.
You're right. That's why I said my vote wouldn't change. I was a no, and I would have stayed a no, because I didn't agree with the three-year across the board, although I didn't realize that was the intention of the motion. So let me, let me ask one of the senior council members here the question. I mean, we've got the, we've got the motion, and it passed, so do we just clarify this at, at council level, no?
If you're asking me to make a ruling as parliamentarian, I would say that the, since the other motion was second, that automatically rules, overrules the first motion. And what the committee recommended to council is a three-year extension of the existing sign code citywide. That would be my understanding of what you passed.
Okay. And a motion to reconsider has to happen at the next meeting, right? Not the same meeting?
Well, this is a recommendation to council, and the council's free to do whatever motion it decides next week.
So no further action necessary tonight? We just have to know how to fix this at council? Okay. All right. Did you want to add anything else, sir? Before we move on to the next subject?
Just a quick comment, that, that three years, you know, sounds like a long time from, from, from your perspective, and I understand six years sounds twice as long as that, but what reality is reality, and if business is not good, that things aren't going to change, from my perspective. And I am a good businessman. I had a lot of money. I still have a lot of money. I put, I put money on the side for my business, and this is unlike anything that's happened in the business world in my entire life, and, you know, and, and signage for me, from my perspective, could be as much as $25,000 per panel, and I, I think it could be significantly higher than a couple thousand dollars. I'm sure it would be significantly higher than just a couple thousand dollars to, to change, change it into a monument sign. So I'm really not saying anything other than what I've said before, other than just to share information with you all about what I know.